Okay, let's get started, folks. All right, good morning. Welcome to the meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, June 26th.
And as a legacy of the 1984 Olympic Games, the foundation is proud of the impact that we've had in our community. We've nearly served, we've served nearly four million youth.
I'm sorry, one moment. Sir, Sergeant, if you could identify who called out. And there'll be no shouting out. This is the, this is one warning to you and to everyone else. I don't know who it is, but Sergeant, identify who it is. Any more shout-outs, you're immediately removed. Thank you.
So, Mr. President, I'm being told that it was Adam Smith. So, Mr. Smith, this is your first and only formal warning.
It's not just his warning, it's for everyone. No shouting out, immediate removal.
Thank you, council member. And I'll say again, as a legacy of the 1984 Summer Olympic Games, we are proud of the impact that we've had in our communities.
Okay, before we go to public comment, we have item seven, which public comment has already been held, but we can take that item up. So let's take up item seven. And we'll start with Councilwoman Park.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, we have an opportunity to do something today that should have been done 60 years ago. There is no other person or place in the city of Los Angeles as iconic as Marilyn Monroe and her Brentwood home. Some of the most world-famous images ever taken of her were in that home, on those grounds, near her pool. And that Marilyn tragically died there forever ties her in time and place to this very home. There is likely no woman in history or culture who captures the imagination of the public the way Marilyn Monroe did. Even all these years later, her story still resonates and inspires many of us today. And I've heard this from people all across my district and all over the world. To lose this piece of history, the only home that Marilyn Monroe ever owned, would be a devastating blow for historic preservation and for a city where less than 3% of historic designations are associated with women's heritage. This was not an action that I took lightly, and I've sought to balance neighborhood interests and concerns as the designation moved unanimously through the Historic Cultural Commission and our own Plum Committee. And today, to address constituent concerns about traffic and safety, I'm also introducing a motion to evaluate tour bus restrictions on Fifth Helena Drive and surrounding streets. My team and I will continue working closely with the community to address any future concerns that arise. And I also understand that access is an important component of preservation, which is why throughout this process, my team and I have worked closely with the property owners to assess potentially moving the home to a place where the public might actually be able to visit and spend time. While that hasn't happened yet, I remain hopeful and committed to working with the property owners to see if this can be done in the future. But today, let's preserve this essential piece of LA's history and culture. I ask for your eye votes. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other members on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tally the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Great, that measure is adopted. Okay, next, we're going to move to public comment.
I represent our neighborhood and our community in Harbor City. We are concerned about this RV Silver Park trying to get established there. We are concerned because, has a survey ever been done with the neighborhood? Was there soil analysis? Noise responsibility? Traffic concern? Parking concern? What constitutes an RV? What about the safety of our children? Are they vetted, whoever is going to be living on this RV park? What about pet ordinance? Occupancy per RV and the size? The lighting of that area that's going to disturb our neighborhood? Our neighborhood is a community that consists of hard-working, responsible people, raising families, retired people who have invested in this community. We keep our community clean, we look out for each other, and we support each other. And we have nothing but love and concern for our community. So please let this be the beginning of the ending of this undermining project. Let this project be built in Marina Del Rey by the owner in his area.
Yes. There are currently three RVs already parked on the property, even though a certificate of occupancy is still pending approval. There was no communication by the city or RV park about the plans for this RV park in our neighborhood. There needs to be better oversight and systems in place to notify the neighborhood before a project like this is approved and in order to protect the safety of the community as a whole. I believe the city needs to have a due diligence requirement on prospective developers who want to build in residential neighborhoods such as criminal background checks and background checks on the developer's past projects. What about Megan's Law? How are we going to ensure safety of this RV park and that? It appears this project is for profit and not for the public. And it's commercial, and this is a residential neighborhood. I respectfully request the City Council approve the Councilman McCosker's motion. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Crystal Cooper. I'm also with number 25.
Good morning, you have one minute.
Thank you. I also don't want the RV park in my residential neighborhood because we deserve to have the same processes do every community, and he didn't do that. One of the problems that we have is note to traffic. RV parks typically attract a large number of vehicles, visitors, leading to increased noise level, traffic congestion, and parking issues. Currently, the parking in President Street is heavily utilized by residents' nearby condos, which consist of 185 units and surrounding residential homes. This makes it crucial to complete a traffic study, which was not done. Increased traffic will dispute the peace and quiet of our residential area. The sinewy accident that just happened where four cars were hit, three were totaled, one went up on, and almost hit a baby, and it doesn't have a light. And this is where the RVs will have to turn in to get into the residential park. We're also worried about Megan's Law. Having approximately daycare, which is two of them, one right next door, children are commonly present, such as schools, and they will not be able to actually enforce and make sure that people who are Megan's Law are accountable. Thank you.
I'm here for item 25. My name is Bob Mingle. I've lived in this neighborhood for 40 years. We're being blindsided by this RV park. This man was told six months ago to report to us, to the neighborhood, and tell us what was going on. He never did. He's trying to pass this and get his permit before it's even completed. And so we have nothing to say. We have, there'll be noise problems, there'll be criminal or criminal activity in our neighborhood, parking problems. There is no good behind this. There was an R1 statute that was put behind this that there is no neighborhood impact done in our neighborhood. It's just being pushed on us. This is wrong. It shouldn't be even put in our neighborhood. It needs to stop. I support Tim McCosker's motion 100%. I will help any way I possibly can. This thing just needs to stop. I've talked to the fire chief, I've talked to the police chief, I've talked to everybody. I've gone down to City Hall. This is wrong from the get-go. The city needs to stop the R1 allowing these things to come in a residential neighborhood. This is set for public use, not residential. These people pay a lot of money for their homes to live where they're at. They do not deserve to have an RV park in the middle of their neighborhood. Nobody would want that in their neighborhood.
Before you speak, I'm going to read some more names so that some folks can line up. Mr. Goat, a developer, Andrew Grabner, Adam Smith, Herman Duarte, Jenny Talia, and Stacy Cigar-Bollinger. You guys could line up. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, good morning. My name is Jose Flores. I'm speaking on item 25.
Okay, and if you could pull the microphone up a little bit so we can hear you better. Thank you. Go ahead, you have one minute.
Yes. The LAMC 14-0087 code is well-intentioned. However, in this case, it has been misapplied. The stakeholders were never approached, informed, or notified about this project. The spirit of the law indicates that it is for the public benefit, for the good of the people. We, the people, we, the people of Harbor City, do not think this is good for us. We, the people, stand united against greed and abusive developers in our neighborhood. We know better what is good for us. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item number 26 and general public comment.
Okay.
Sorry, just number 26 because public comment's at the end of the meeting, right?
Correct, so you have one minute for item 26.
Gotcha. My name's Adam from LA Can's Human and Civil Rights Committee. Item 26 is relative to an agreement regarding spaying and neutering. And I think it's important to point out that there is clear agreement with this council and its leadership to continue to neuter Working Angelino's ability to give public comment in a timely manner by putting it at the end of the meeting.
So, I appreciate what you're trying to do. This is not on the council agenda. So, next speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items. And for the record, can you point to the council file for the motion to change the rule?
Go ahead, you have three minutes for the item.
I just wanted what the council file is for the rule change because it currently, the copy I have says general comments.
Please stick to the agenda items. You're welcome to speak to this during general at the end of the meeting.
So there's no council file for that item? Okay, that's nice to know. Let's start off with item number one. We got one through six. Those are like easements, sidewalks. You know, the sidewalks that you won't fix and that people are constantly tripping and falling and getting injured on. We have, we have a business improvement district on item four. What's their ties to Israel? And do they have any business interests there? That should be known to the public. The genocide in Gaza. Same with item five, the Hollywood Media Business Improvement District. And item six, the North Hollywood Transit Business Improvement District. Now, let's move on to item 25. That's related to something in Harbor City. Environmental analysis, because, you know, you're doing nothing about the environment. We have item 26 that's related to a spay and neuter clinic. We got multiple animal rights stuff, stuff related to the shelters. You know, those shelters where, that are in a big, that are a big mess. You may remember that whole scandal that's still kind of going on, where the dogs are not getting walked. They're, they're in horrible conditions at the shelters, and you all are doing nothing about it. So maybe the leadership and operation of the shelters is not going very well right now. You might want to reconsider that a little bit since clearly the dogs are not in good condition, the cats are not in good condition, dogs aren't getting walked. You know, they're just, the conditions are bad. They're all in crowded kennels, and they're not happy. And they're overcrowded. And you're all doing nothing about the terrible conditions of the shelters. So maybe, maybe there should be another, you should, it's time to reevaluate the leadership and the operators of these shelters because clearly things are not going very well right now. So, yeah. I'd still like to know what that council file is for the rule change because the rules say general comments add at the end of the meeting.
So you've been asked politely to stay on topic. You're welcome to come.
Okay, who's ever yelling out? Sergeants, if you could escort them out, please. I gave a warning earlier, no yelling out. Please identify who yelled out and remove them. Camille Lewis is the person for the record, and she needs to leave. Okay, next speaker. She's been kicked out, subject to Rule 7 and all that.
Good morning, Mr. City Attorney.
Good morning, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
I only need two today.
Okay, you have two minutes for the items.
Can I have 26 and 27? They are all about animal services. So I would like to speak on them together. I have several comments about animal services in the city of LA, specifically about cockroaches and rat. Why they are not getting enough animal services. There are so many rats in my neighborhood. They are damaging the house, damaging the car, damaging the person's health. But again, we are not enforcing any sort of animal services on rat. We have, we have, in our neighborhood, we have an invasion of cockroaches. They invade your house, they invade your home, they invade inside of your pants, inside of your skin, inside of your mouth. But again, we do not do anything to control them, to control, to make the situation better. Instead, we release those cockroaches back to the street. We release those rats back to the street so they can hurt more neighborhood, more family, more vehicle, more properties. Why we are not doing any sort of control, animal services enforcement, doing anything about cockroaches? Why those are illegal cockroaches and rat are captured over and over again, and then they continue to be released back to the same neighborhood over and over again? Why we are not have a dedicated animal services prison so we can lock them up together so they never back to the street to harm our neighborhood, to harm our vehicle, to damage our health condition? So, Mr. City Attorney, you never like me? But again, my comment is, I wish the city attorney, the city council, we are doing something, not just provide services for the rat and cockroaches, but we can control, enforce, regulate, let them know the law.
Thank you so much for that. Next, we have Mr. Goat, developer.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Yes, we'll put them on there. Yes, thank you, ambulance chaser. So, what is this? McCosker doing something honest again? Now, Curran, you've got to go and talk to this guy. What the fuck is wrong with Pat McCosker, known as Tim? What is going on here, Bob? This guy's actually representing his constituents? That can't be. Look at number 25. Halting a piece of shit project because the people don't want it? I've never heard of such a thing. How about you, Hugo? Have you ever heard of such a thing? This is insanity. I can't believe this McCosker. Where did this guy come from? And to you campaign donors, looks like you slipped an honest one in here. You fucked up. Then we get to number 26. Spaying and neuter my fellow animals. I don't want that. I'm an animal, I want a flock. I want to procreate. I want rats to procreate, I want birds to procreate, I want everybody to procreate. After all, see, that's the problem with you humans. You're not having enough kids, so they have to import all these new people because you're too stupid to have your own kids.
Speaker, this is not on the agenda? Please stick to the agenda.
Aren't homo sapiens animals too? That's a good point. So I'm not topic, as they say in Chinese, psych. Then we have number 27. The Jefferson Park Animal Services Centers in filthy, dirty CD 7 and the Heather Hut illegally occupied zone of CD 10. Never been voted by a single voter, how about that? Vote for that, vote for that Asian lady in November. So she's taking and putting this shit into a fucking MFC. Motherfucking cocksucker report. Yes, we've read a lot of those, haven't we? I say no. Then the absentee failure of Kevin DeLeona, number 28. He doesn't even show up to work. Do you know people who don't show up to work and get paid? Yes, they're called deputy city attorneys. Oh, okay, then he's just following his instructions. He has an MFC report. Yes. You know, the guy that calls black kids monkeys? Where the hell's he at here? Where's Kevin DeLeona? He's hiding. Yes. So now, let's see, can we talk about the closed session item? Or did you close that shit up?
So the closed session item is not open for public comment. Public comment was held at BFI.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you, there asshole, yes. Then we have CD 1, we support it. Now we get to the public comment.
Okay, mercifully, that's your time. As you know, it was at the end, Mr. Spiller. Next speaker. Good morning.
I'll take all items, please. Just to clarify, there are some bids, some easements. And then was there also a ban on oversized vehicle parking available for comment?
You'd have to check the, I'm not seeing anything. But you have three minutes for the items.
Okeydoke, cool. So I'll spend a couple of minutes on business improvement districts because we have a couple of those. And I think business improvement districts do have the potential to achieve their goal, which is help local business interact with their communities, which is benefits consumers and families and makes our neighborhoods nice places to be. The issue is how it plays out is typically that there's some tax subsidies and breaks and resources provided to business owners that the public pays for. But then their end of the bargain is kind of, I don't, I don't know what we're getting from that because we're not seeing them pay livable wages, we're not seeing them maintain the streets outside of their business. And a business improvement district in my neighborhood just sent out a solicitation for free labor asking for a volunteer to run their social media. And you just get some great experience doing that. So I don't know why the Sherman Oaks Chamber of Commerce is looking for a volunteer social media coordinator for their bid. I don't think that makes sense. But I mean, these are for other neighborhoods, but it's really, it's really the same regardless. We also have some easements. These are, you know, pretty standard. And it's great to have the opportunity to comment on them, but I'm not, I'm not sure why we're separating that from general public comment. We have a motion from Tim McCosker and Mr. Blumenfeld related to projects in Harbor City. Harbors are very important. I just wish we had a little bit more public transportation access to the harbor and coastside neighborhoods. I think that would be interesting to consider when we're bringing motions to benefit the harbor district, maybe boost their economies by making it easier for shoppers and workers to get to those areas. I know when I'm on the bus, it's really hard to get to the harbor. We have some on item 24. Oh, no, wait, that one's not available. I would love, I would love to give general public comment now, but I guess I'll have to wait to the end. And I just want to point out how kind of silly that is. And you're making the sergeant's job really difficult, and you're confusing the public.
Audrey G, and I want to speak to three, four, five, and six.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
So three and four are both about easements. And I oppose any new easements because basically they're another aspect of enforcement of 4118. Once again, making more places that people are not allowed to sit, stand, camp. Clearly, 4118 reveals the intent of inhumane policy and its enforcers, including bids, to rid LA streets of visible poor folks prior to the Olympics by any and all means necessary. Also regard to easements, the community demands an independent standalone hearing on 4118 before any new easements are approved, before any new neighborhoods and intersections are approved.
These items are not related to 4118. You're welcome to speak to that during general public comment at the end of the meeting if you'd like.
Well, regarding bids, I also oppose any new bids formations because they are just faux enforcers, deputized police who enforce 4118. You can't separate these things. The bids are allowed to enforce where people can sit, stand, and lie. And I once again, you know, say that the community demands an independent standalone hearing on all of these things and bids because bids are, you know, the bid enforcers are very violent and brutal. So that 4118 finally brings impacted people into the discussion. That's a, that's a demand that's so reasonable. How can you make all this policy that affects them and allow bids to enforce it without, without this impacted people brought into the discussion as well as truly knowledgeable advocates for unhoused people such as LA Can, which passionately fights against bids and anti-black racism, which is embedded in 4118 enforcement?
There've been a lot of comments here this afternoon about this project. They don't want it in their neighborhood. We got, we acquired this property back in November of 2023. Prior to acquiring, acquiring the property, we met extensively with the planning department in regard to the land use and the zoning. The planning department approved a public benefit program for this project. We then went to the building department. And the building department made us go through a number of departments, including the fire department, disability access, and then again through planning. Once again, the building department issued a permit. We then started construction on that site. So our project has been approved by right. Right? We then started construction on the project. Was that a minute?
Yes, so your time has expired. Next speaker.
Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Stuart Silver. I'm with Silver RV Park. The project received zoning approval as a project LAMC, specifically as a public benefits project, according to Bulletin 1195 from City Planning. The project's now 97% complete. We did everything we were supposed to do and got all the permits. And I have, I brought them with me for you guys, which are right here. We have two sets of permits, not just one. One from HCD and one from the city. We also spent millions of dollars on this project in order to get this. Absolutely. Let me give you, is my time running? Oh, okay. We also spent a bunch of money on this. We made sure that the ground was safe. Not only did we have a report from Calgem and also Kaha and OCHA, but we also did a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. I know that the report says that. I'd like you guys to, I'd like you guys to, before the council takes action, please postpone the motion until you can look over what we have.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say that we have, since the beginning, followed all the rules and regulations that were put forth for this project. It was given ministerial approval. That doesn't require discretionary. We have passed every inspection on the first try. We have had no, no problems with our installs. We've had, let's see, hold on, I've got my notes here. We've, we've put in, all the complaints I've heard so far, we've put in processes to cover. We have Megan's Law disclosures. We have background checks for all residents. We have security systems with LPR camera coming in the gate to identify anybody coming in the gates. This project, it was given overt government action simply by issuing its building permit. And to try to stop it at this point when it's 97% complete would be a violation of its rights.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm calling about the Silver RV Park planning in the Harbor City area. The area is basically two parcels of land that were zoned residential for decades but used for oil extraction. It is now being converted into commercial use although it is in the middle of a residential neighborhood block with personal homes to the left, right, and across the street from it. That area may potentially be contaminated with petrol chemicals at this point due to previous usage. But this commercial property is being put in with very little notification to anyone that actually lives in the community. And there is a fair amount of pushback to having this being put into our personal neighborhood where people have lived for many years. We're concerned about the potential of contamination as well as security issues that may be going in and that the local community never had a chance to speak on this potential development that is coming into this block at this point in time. Thank you very much.
Cool, that works. Ah, cool, all right, cool. So the other day I was down on Figueroa with this little chick there. And she was, well, the thing is, she was trying to like, you know, introduce me to the inside of her mouth.
Speaker, respectfully, there is nothing on the agenda that's open for public comment related to Figueroa. So please stick to the items. Again, that's items one through six and 25 through 28. This is your only warning.
Alright, well, is there anything on the agenda about, you know, the other day when I met the goat down on Figueroa?
Okay, so we've asked you politely, I know we go through this every day, if you'd like to speak to the items, you can, but we're going to move on to the next caller. Go ahead, next caller.
Well, and animal service. First of all, bids, I'm all in favor of bids. I've been asking for the one that used to be in Van Nuys to be reinstated. I don't know what the situation there, there is, but I've been told that the councilwoman may be trying to get rid of our public parking facilities there to put affordable housing. Now, I like the idea of housing, but you know, these businesses down there need those parking spots. So Ms. Padilla, please, I hope this isn't true and that you'll work with the businesses in the area and get that bid established in Van Nuys. Let's go to animal services. May I do that, sir?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. You know, it's amazing how people complain, complain that the city doesn't, doesn't do enough for these animals, et cetera. So I'm going to volunteer, and on Friday I'll talk to my councilman and say, look, wherever you need me, put me to work, I'm ready to scoop up poop or whatever you need. And I'm going to ask some of the other people who are always complaining, Andrew, to join, and maybe together we can really help improve these animal services. So Andrew, I hope that you'll be available to scoop up poop with some of the rest of us. Please call me back on public comment, sir.
For item 26 and 27, related to our vets at our shelters, just want to note that the kind of negligent care that happens at animal services because you understaffed that department. I, I got my dog from the shelter, East Valley Shelter, and fired that they get neutered. And they, they took the cone off of my dog early and weren't watching them. And they actually handed me a dog that had a wound which sutures were coming apart that was in the early stages of infection because nobody at the shelter had the capacity to look after them and check in on them. And that's your fault because they were all understaffed. So just, just want to note that. And for four, five, and six, this is the bids, and Groot always takes public input way more seriously on these items. Bro, what if Camille Lewis wanted to speak on this item, on these bids? Do you not care about the council rules or the Brown Act, which says that prior to removing an individual, the presiding member or their designee shall warn the individual that their behavior is disrupting the meeting? That is the, that is the Brown Act. So whatever new envisionment you have to the council rules.
Speak to the items, please.
Oh, you don't like this, Bob?
Speak to the items, all members, well, everyone was warned after the first thing anyway, but I'm not going to get in a back and forth. Go ahead, speak to the items.
You can't warn an entire room, you have to warn an individual. It says prior to removing, you have to warn the individual, warn the individual. That is the text of the law, Bob.
Mr. Quan, you can speak to it during general public comment later if you'd like, but please stick to the agenda items for now.
But, but Camille Lewis can't because she was kicked out, and you're banking on the fact that she won't sue you.
Okay, so you've been asked politely by both myself and the council president, next caller? And stay on the line for general public.
Okay, great. Well, as you know, I am the only reporter in Los Angeles who today has an article about a related subject, directly related, the resignation of Animal Services Commission President Larry Gross. Why? Because, among other things, I predicted a year ago, I told all of you a year ago that he was using multiple undisclosed email accounts that hid deals such as these and needs such as these that have led to multimillion dollar attacks, unimaginable barbaric policies, and preventable near fatal attacks on your employees and visitors. I was the only one who reported it. It's not in the LA Times, it's on danielgust.substack.com. As much as we need to pour money into these items, what you don't know is what is hidden in these undisclosed email accounts, and Larry Gross alone had at least four of them, four of them. And so you have no idea if this is a good investment or if it needs to be more or less or changed. You have no idea what the real issue is behind the story about the vendors. I have nothing against Western University, but it has been an insufficient deal in the past. So why is it you're advancing these issues when your council president resigned yesterday and nobody else knew it unless they read danielgust.substack.com? And here's the question, council members, how do you know that these deals are appropriate if they're sufficient, if they're even honest, if you haven't demanded to see every single email from all of these undisclosed email accounts and get to the bottom? And by the way, it's been going on for years with Jim Bickhart.
Mr. Gus, your time has expired. Go ahead and stay on the line for general public comment.
Thank, thank you very much. Our neighborhood is vehemently opposed to the Silver RV development, which will surely be an eyesore to our community. Realtors have told us that our home values will decrease if the development goes through. Police have advised us that criminal activity will increase with the presence of this type of land use. Specifically, the same owners have a Wilmington RV park which has had increased crime. How is this development a public benefit? How does it improve our quality of life? I'm aware that this is a different community than what I bought into. People are now living in RVs a couple of blocks from us along Western Avenue. Tagger's are active daily along the railroad tracks behind our homes, and a homeless colony living in tents is about a half a mile away from us. What we're trying to do is to stop further negative impacts to our homes and neighborhoods. Currently, there are many large vehicles that are traveling down our roads. We only have three entrances to our neighborhood, and we are being bombarded with large trucks that are.
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller.
Thank you. My name is Chris Chapman. I'm an attorney for the park. I understand council member McHosker is getting pushback from the local residents that do not want the park being built. You've heard from a number of those residents today, and so Mr. McHosker is now creating a smoke screen of alleged environmental concerns for the park to try to delay or stop the park from being built. But I'll remind everyone on, on the council that you're all proponents of affordable housing, whether it's affordable temporary housing or permanent housing, and if you really believe in that, then you shouldn't try to stop this park from being built. I will remind some of the residents that spoke today, Ms. Denstein, Ms. Hallson, Ms. Cooper, Mr. Mingle, Mr. Flores, and Ms. Melissa, that be careful what you wish for because you could have a drug rehabilitation, rehabilitation center put in next door, or you could have a halfway house put in next door. Here, it's going to be an RV park that people have the same rights as you to live in the neighborhood. This issue about the abandoned wells, it should not be an issue, it's been dealt with by.
Speaker, your time has expired.
I heard there were some changes. Could you mind telling me what items are available, please?
Sure, the items that are open for public comment are items one through six and 25 through 28.
Also, one through six are open now? Okay, so I'll take all available items, please, and I'm going to be on for general public comment later.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items, and you can stay on the line for general public comment. So go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Lot of sequel exemptions here. It's funny to hear stuff about, you know, the environment and what are we doing for the fucking groundwater and the trees and our green space and all that nonsense, but if it's projects where the right people shook the right hands behind the right doors with the right ears not listening, well then, you know, exemptions all the way down. We always hear about how hard it is to run a business or buy a property and maintain it in this city, but it really isn't if you have the right friends and you pay the right people, because you don't really have to pay any fucking fees. They'll waive all kind of fees. And all those fees we always hear when they get implemented are supposed to do things like fix the parks or ensure public right of way easements and all that bullshit, but the sidewalks are all fucked up, the streets are all fucked up. And for some reason, most of us feel like we can't afford to own a home or, or own a business, but all, all you guys and your friends have no problem doing that. I think it's really interesting, I think y'all should have to recuse yourselves because you guys have spouses that own businesses, you guys are engaging in business behind closed doors. Actually, a lot of it out in the open is that the public is just so demoralized that they don't feel like they have any recourse available to them. It's really pathetic, it's really sad that in one of the most powerful cities with one of the most powerful public services and civil governments in the world, that the population feels demoralized. So business improvement districts, that's a joke, cut, cut the fucking rent for all the businesses in an area by half, and you'll have business improvement. Then all the prices will be lowered. Instead, they'll just keep scapegoating the workers, acting like it's their fault, when we all know it's the landlord's fault. Animal services, what a joke. We got a bunch of fucking dogs with gaping wounds all over their fucking bodies, rotting away in cages, no one to check up on them, sitting in boxes with shit piling up. And if you go outside, there's coyotes wandering around grabbing cats. So you guys need to get your shit together. I guess it's lucky for y'all that the feds aren't interested in protecting the animals, and they're just interested in your stupid, I don't even know anymore, because it just seems like you're running rampant. It sucks, spaying or neutering is interesting. Could you imagine me kept in a cage for a year straight, and then they just grab you, cut out your balls, throw you back in there, and then you die in that cage anyway? What a fucking shitty way to go. So you know what? Fuck that. You don't need to spay and neuter them until you decide that you're going to take care of animals in general.
Caller, your time has expired.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Caller, which items would you like to speak to?
Mr. Spindler, you've already spoken in person, you can't speak twice on the phone as well. Next caller. It's sad that we can recognize you from your barks, Mr. Spindler. Next person.
My name is Susan Rocha, I live in CD1. I have a noise problem with Divine Savior Catholic Church. Their amplified sound system that blasts tape recordings in my house sometimes a day.
So caller, this is not on, on the agenda, so you're welcome to speak to it during general public comment, but we are not currently taking general public comment, that will be later. Are there any of the agenda items you'd like to speak to?
Well, somebody mentioned about the dog poop, I mean, the homeless people and the dog poop and the environment, I guess that one of those is on the agenda.
So you have one minute for item number 25. Go ahead.
Twenty-five? Okay, well, you care about the environment when it comes to noise with animals, but you don't care about the noise problems with people. You know, I have a noise problem. You care about the Valley River and the noise for keeping the birds safe from the noise, but you don't care about people noise, and that's a real issue. I mean, you have environmental department, and for what reason? Only for the animals? They don't, they don't care about the air, but they don't care about noise for people? That's an environmental issue too. But you're, you're not doing anything about train noise, plane noise, amplified sound from religious organizations like the Catholic Church, like the Scientology.
Speaker, this is not on topic, you've been warned. You can stay on the line for general public comment if you'd like. Next caller.
Our neighborhood is a very small, tight knit community, and we were very blindsided by the RV park being built. If you look up his name, Stuart Silver, you'll see he owns another park in Wilmington, and that is very unregulated. I urge the council members to look at the Yelp reviews and the Google reviews by the people that have stayed there. It's very dirty, there's a lot of problems. LAPD has been called multiple times for missing children, assaults with deadly weapons. How is he able to tell us that that's not going to be the same problems that we faced in our neighborhood with their development? Also, they have no certificate of occupancy or permits like that, and they already have RVs with people inside occupying the space. Thank you.
This is Richard Serrano. Again, your Kia worker is muting me out. I heard him do it on the Kia.
Mr. Serrano, would you like, would you like to speak to item four, five, or six?
Again, I'm a city attorney, I need the ethics committee to look into him. I've heard him key me out twice.
Speaker, this is your last opportunity. You may speak to items four, five, or six.
I'm speaking on the set because I have to go down there to make my point. The two guys on the left to the stage of the screen.
Okay, so you've been given the opportunity, you clearly do not want to speak on four, five, or six. Next caller.
Yes, my name is Jason, I'm a spoken scan viewer, I can't speak, go ahead.
Next caller.
I think all the calls have been through.
Is there anyone else other than that person who just called in twice, which makes the seventh time? I'm seeing the staff shake their heads.
Okay.
Yes, yes, you can hear me. Hello?
Sorry, yes, go ahead. This is only for items four, five, and six.
Yes, four, five, and six. Mr. Serrano should be given a chance in spoken scan.
Okay, Mr. Candido, you've already, you've already been given your opportunity to speak. So I believe, is that, is there anyone else? No? Okay.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Maria Torres. He trabajado para Fly and Food por ocho años y soy una miembro orgullosa de United Healthcare Local 11.
¿Puedo repetir su nombre, señora?
Maria Torres.
My name is Maria Torres, and I worked for eight years for Fly and Food, and I'm proud. ¿Cuál es la asociación que pertenece?
Y trabajo consistente. Platos, mi trabajo consiste en lavar platos del equipo.
My job is I do the dishes, I wash the dishes from the team.
Que entran y salen de las aerolíneas internacionales de LAX.
Oh, those that come in and out of the international airlines from LAX.
La política de aumentar los salarios de los trabajadores del turismo.
The policy, the policies to increase the salaries of the workers of tourism.
Se introdujo hace un año.
Was presented a year ago.
Actualmente estoy trabajando, estoy rentando en un lugar para mi esposo y para mí. La renta me subió 250 dólares el año pasado.
My rent from me and my husband went up $250 from last year to this year.
Y estamos pensando mudarnos a otro estado.
So we are considering moving to a different state.
Yo no quisiera hacer eso porque mis nietos viven aquí y hemos vivido toda la vida aquí en Los Ángeles.
I would prefer not to do that because my grandchildren live here, and we live here in Los Angeles for all our lives.
Además, me gusta mi trabajo y lo hago, y estamos trabajando muy duro y nos merecemos un sueldo digno.
And also I love my work, we're working very hard, and we deserve a dignified salary.
Recientemente, la Junta Nacional del Trabajo le dijo a Fly and Food que lo va a perseguir por siete violaciones.
Recently, the board, the National Board of Work told Fly and Food that they were going to be persecuted for seven generations.
Esperamos todo su apoyo y yo tengo algo aquí para los concejales.
Thank you very much. Speaker, your time has expired.
And we are expecting your support, and I have something here for the council members.
Thank you very much. You can give that to the sergeants.
Good afternoon, my name is Reverend Gary Bernard Williams. I'm the pastor of St. Mark United Methodist Church in South Los Angeles, a part of District Eight, and I'm also a board member of CLUD, that's clergy, and lead to United for Economic Justice. My faith calls me to come today to support the tourist workers' rising motion. These workers deserve to benefit from all of the billions of dollars that will come into the city of Los Angeles during the Olympics. These are the people that will be on the front line, the faces that the tourists will see first. So I think they deserve to benefit from the billions of dollars that are coming. If this is not passed every day that they, is delayed, these workers lose approximately $230 on average wage per week. Somebody could lose their home, could be evicted based on the amount of money that they're losing. This policy should be prioritized. So we're, I'm, I'm, let me finish this then. I'm asking you today to please make this a priority when you come back from your recess. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Reverend.
Real estate event in a church on Sunday, the mayor, a supervisor, Infowars on Monday, held a press conference, and it's such a pity, eyes around the world are looking at our city, they're not liking what they see, the propaganda on TV would have everyone believe. They were quietly praying, quietly playing, but what they don't want you to know is they were selling land to go. Neighborhoods they call englo, stolen West Bank land to go. The mayor lied, I think she knows what really happened on Pico. Even our dear leader Joe thinks we're all too dumb to know. Palestinian land they stole, now they're selling it on Pico. International crime is how they roll when they sell the West Bank on Pico. I want everyone to know that abundant housing is a lobbying group, and they don't give a shit about the homeless, so think about, think about that while they're lying to you. Thanks, spoken scan.
Well, hello, my name is Terrence London, and I want to start by thanking the Los Angeles City Council for passing the motion to designate the home of Marilyn Monroe as a historic cultural monument. I know this case was especially important to Councilwoman Tracey Park, who understands, brought the actual motion, so I appreciate it. I do have an opinion I want to express. I do have an opinion I want to express. I know there's been discussion about relocating the house elsewhere, and I hope that the house can remain in the place where it's been for the past nearly a hundred years. I know there's currently a wall blocking the view of the house, but I wish it can be replaced with a fence that tourists can see through in order to see the house. But in any case, whether the house is relocated or not, I really appreciate all the people who have come out to support Marilyn's house over the past few months, several months, and I think the council for voting in favor of designating a historic cultural monument. So, thank you very much, and have a blessed day.
Thank you very much, and you as well. Thank you. Your time has expired. You need to leave the podium so the next speaker can come up and speak. Next speaker.
I'm Mark Witschke, retired LAUSD teacher. The Los Angeles mayor and certain city council members have grossly mischaracterized the events of June twenty-third at the Addis Torres synagogue in West Los Angeles as an attempt by Palestinian and pro-Palestinian members of the community to deny access to religious services at the synagogue and characterize it as an anti-Semitic action. This is patently false. The, June twenty-third was a Sunday, and the Jewish Day of Religious Service, their Sabbath, is of course on a Saturday. The synagogue was not open for religious services on that Sunday, but was rented by a real estate firm that sells land, not only in Israeli proper, but has been known to sell land in Palestinian territory that has been stolen from Palestinian families. The forward, the newspaper of the Jewish community, reported that protesters did not block the entrance, and they stated that their protest was against specifically the sale of Palestinian lands and lands that were stolen from Palestinians. That city officials would mischaracterize the June twenty-third event at the synagogue-
Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please. Sir, you need to vacate the podium so the next speaker can speak. Good afternoon.
The city attorney's not here, can I speak? It took LA CAN and other community members a year of demanding the release of the report back on forty-one eighteen to actually come out. It's clear that otherwise this report back would have never come out. While parts of this report back are damning to the cost and efficacy of forty-one eighteen, the report back is far from comprehensive. It is missing real data from LAPD and other departments on cost, and numerous departments tasked with contributing to the report back are barely or not mentioned at all. The community demands, Paul Krikorian, an independent and standalone hearing before the entire city council, where all city departments whose data was requested and/or collected for the report back on forty-one eighteen are required to present. Additionally, community members impacted by forty-one eighteen enforcement and groups like LA CAN must be invited to present as well. Forty-one eighteen is a racist law and isn't something that can be made better, particularly when this report back is incomplete and lacking substance around forty-one eighteen is enforced, how much it costs, and how it actually makes houselessness work. Nobody brings that up here, how it's making-
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Seki Blue Hutchinson. I'm the founder of the Women's Leadership Project and a member of the South LA-based Standing for Black Girls Coalition. As you may or may not be aware, black women comprise four point three percent of the city's population, yet are twenty-five to thirty-three percent of all female rape, domestic violence, and gun homicide victims. We are outraged that over a year after your own civil rights department dropped these horrendous stats, there has been no public action or community engagement from the city council or Mayor Karen Bass. As domestic violence survivors from CD-8, we see vacant lots, pot shops, and abandoned buildings overtaking our neighborhoods. So, we are here once again to demand you act by investing in youth centers, prevention education, and mental health resources for black girls and black queer youth in CD-8, ten, and fifteen. Because let's break it down, if white women were being victimized at these rates, this council would have declared a public safety crisis from jump. Council members Hutt, Harris Dawson, who are MIA in this chamber, and all of you, we are calling on you to grow a damn backbone, stand for black girls, and show up for the-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I don't know where Katie is. Maybe she was tired of people calling out her fucking lies, not what happened on Sunday. I wonder if Katie has any statement on the Infowars host who was at the press conference that she attended on Monday? Now, Bass claimed that she didn't know that this Infowars host guy was at her press conference, even though he was wearing an Infowars hat. Shouldn't that be pretty obvious that you have an Inf- I don't know, any of you have any statement? Tim, maybe? Or anyone, if you have any statements on the fact that the mayor was, and one of your fellow council members was meeting with an Infowars host? Because it seems like maybe that's a bit of a problem. But you keep lying about what happened on Sunday, the people who are violent, or the pro-genocide people who were supporting the selling of stolen land, which was what was happening at the synagogue. Kevin needs to resign.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Robinson. I'm the project director of Standing for Black Girls Coalition and Women's Leadership Project based in South LA. I'm here to urge the city council to identify, utilize, and amplify the stories and commentaries and analysis of black women and girls in city press material and media outreach. In March of two thousand twenty-three, over one year ago, your office, Shred, reported that there is a declining violence amongst other racial groups, but violence against black women has skyrocketed. Black women make up four point three percent of LA city population, yet account for twenty-five to thirty-three percent of all female violence victims in Los Angeles. Where is the outrage, the city council? Yes, I am angry, and I do believe that perhaps if black women were getting killed inside of Marilyn Monroe's home, then maybe you would then give us some attention. The city leadership does not address violence against black women. Our blood is on your hands, and we need you to do something. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Amma Boateng, and I'm a sixteen-year-old rising junior at Hamilton High School, as well as a member of the Standing for Black Girls Coalition based in South LA. I stand here to strongly urge the council to create youth teen centers in city council districts heavily impacted by domestic and sexual violence like CD-8. Issues such as these require immediate attention as they have been swept under the rug for far too long. Black women are a mere four point three percent of the population in Los Angeles and comprise thirty-three percent of violence, rape, and homicide cases. This in turn makes it hard for us to advance as a people. If you kill us, we cannot thrive as a group, as one whole body. We cannot be the change we desperately need if we are dead, beaten, or nowhere to be found. Thank you, and rest assured, we will be following up to ensure that you are held accountable for listening to the voices of black girls and queer youth.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jasmine Hutchinson. I'm sixteen years old, a junior at Hamilton High School, and a member of the Standing for Black Girls Coalition based in South LA. I'm here to urge the council to hire and train culturally responsive community responders to replace police investigators and first responders on domestic violence cases. Countless studies have shown that women of color who report incidents of domestic violence are more likely to experience further abuse from police. It's evident that law enforcement is harmful and toxic when it comes to addressing the needs of BIPOC female victims of domestic violence. Thank you for your time, and we will be following up with you to ensure that you are held accountable for listening to the voices of black girls and queer youth.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Maria Jose Leones, and I am seventeen years old. I'm a member of the Standing for Black Girls Coalition based in South LA. I'm here to urge the council to create youth teen centers in city council districts heavily impacted by domestic and sexual violence like CD-8. This is very important because as a teenager, I understand how difficult it can be to find resources that accommodate to younger ages, race, and sexuality. My neighborhood sits around the edge of CD-8, nearly hidden. On my streets, I have witnessed cases where teens could not leave their violent situations due to lack of resources around our neighborhood. I believe that these youth centers would be beneficial to those teenagers who live around me that are impacted by this, with no other means of rescue. Thank you for your time, and we will be following up with you to ensure that you are held accountable for listening to the voices of black girls and queer youth.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Tamari Cook, and I'm a resident of CD-8, and I'm the program manager for the Women's Leadership Project and a member of the Standing for Black Girls Coalition. I'm standing before you once again to urge this body to show that you too stand for black girls. The stats are horrendous, as you have been reminded time and time again by my colleagues and our students. What we know for sure is that black women top the list when it comes to being victimized in LA, whether by gun violence, intimate partner violence, or poverty, which is in and of itself violent. Nothing is being done about it. But what we also know is that life in LA is even more dangerous if you're a young person who is black and queer or non-gender conforming. But the stats that we use to determine what resources should be allotted are incomplete. In addition to the other demands put forth, I also urge this body to mandate police and service agencies to use data sets that take into account multiple identity categories, such as comprehensive gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, and violence risks, so that the picture is painted more accurately and resources are allotted appropriately as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Public comment on Marilyn Monroe's Brentwood House. Marilyn Monroe's house on one-two-three-oh-five Fifth Helena Drive is historically important and significant because it's the only house she owned in her lifetime. Marilyn is still an uplifting role model for many people today. Her movies and personality helped me get through tough times in my life. Her acting career and legacy put Hollywood on the map and draws tourists from around the world. She was the most beautiful and sweetest woman in Hollywood history. Her house needs to be turned into a museum like the Anne Frank House in Amsterdam since it helped gather Marilyn fans around the world, come together, and the people who knew her. This is deeply emotional for me, since I've been missing her for the past several months, and I still miss her to this day. Last month, I had dreams with Marilyn. It felt so real, since I was happy to be reunited with her. In the dream, I was in her house. The inside looked so beautiful, and I saw Marilyn getting ready for our date night. Seeing her again in my dreams helped me.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll take five callers on the phone. Please be ready to speak. Yes, go right ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
See, again, Paul Krikorian is ready to move on, real quick. This is what your staffing is doing. You censored me from public speech. I've seen and heard them. This is public comment, so don't mute me out. The skinny guy off your left went ahead and censored me out to not be able to speak. Nareem Martinez's old staff, Monica Rodriguez's friend, Emila Padillas, whatever it is, this person is doing it to me all the time. I mean, I'm going to take it to the ethics committee, have to bring a legal lawsuit for Brown Act death. So, you guys keep doing this BS and say that you don't. Don't censor the people's words. Yes, I'm upset. I should have been able to speak on twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, because there's valid points to what I had to say. There is nothing self-serving about what I say. I'm trying to make it better and bring to light what you guys do in the dark.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Next caller, please.
Rob Klon. I just want to ask the council president, have you taken a look at the Budget and Finance Committee agenda? We've got forty-one closed-session items, which is why I am just baffled to see Grote open you up to legal exposure earlier by allowing Bob to kick somebody out without a proper warning. Your council rules, Rule Twelve, you yell about it all the time, the rules shall be enforced as follows. The presiding officer has the authority to issue a warning to a person violating the rule. If the person continues to violate, then you can remove. Brown Act, prior to removing an individual, the presiding member of their designation shall warn the individual. So, what is this stuff about a generalized warning to the entire room? Grote, if this thing goes to court, are you going to go up on the stand and perjure yourself and lie and say that you actually can specifically identify that Camille was disruptive earlier? And when did she get a particular-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.